City Council is in session, please roll call. Here, okay. Okay, we begin, I know Councilman Miranda you wanted to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am. I believe that the gentleman sitting up front first row to my left, Chief Lucicero, Chief Staff Bennett, and where's Mr. Greco from the police has come up to the podium. As you understand what the dilemma is, all three of you do, about the staffing and the concerns that we have with public safety and the needs also to keep the city in the best financial ability without going to the reserves, what does that mean? If you go into reserves, you're gonna pay higher interest for what you have getting less services, so that's a double whammy. And I understand, Mr. Carlson, that's why I appreciate what he said. So, have you gentlemen discussed this and come to any conclusion how to resolve the ambulance for the East Tampa? Something that can be worked out within two or three months after we pass this budget so the people, good people in East Tampa could have full service?
Sure, I mean, since obviously had time to work with both parties, let me just kinda tell you where I'm at in my role as Chief of Staff, working with the CFO. As I mentioned, and I don't mean to reiterate this for any other reason than, you know, what Mr. Carlson said earlier about planning cycles is a real thing. You know, you know that the council and the administration got a start on May 1, which is a little bit unusual based on the election cycle. So when the budget gets presented, literally 64 business days later, and then 32 more business days later, here we are, talking about the second hearing. That's not enough time to really peel back the onion and see what's going on. But I also hear that the history of supporting the evolving part of the city and its public safety services is in need of tremendous focus. I've worked with Chief Lucicero for many years on the front lines of the streets, especially in our tactical days, so I know his work ethic, I know his analysis level. I've had a lot of conversations since I've been here with Mr. Greco. He's passionate. We know that there's three ingredients to get this done, it's passion, capacity, and funding. And it's the part that I know that the administration is willing to look at to really do a deep dive into that funding. But I think the thing that allowed me to come in tonight and read my opening comments and talking about moving the needle of the initial level of service around Station 16 was the idea that when we're trying to meet a level of service citywide, and I'm confident that on October 1st, the day the budget kicks in, that the fire department will initiate that increased level of service until we peel back this onion and figure out how to get not only 16, but any station that needs additional levels of service to create a full-time unit to get us where we need to be, you have, and again, I agree with what Charlie said earlier, it's trust and verify. It doesn't matter that I have 35 years of public safety, the mayor has the same amount in her public safety, we know public safety deployments, we plan on working with the fire department in very short order to figure out where this needs to go. And we have to get the full-time units in place, but I know one thing, if the budget gets approved, we're in a position to start changing that level of service on October 1, the way it's been proposed, without affecting the bottom line of the budget with an immediate focus on getting these things in a full-time status.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, and certainly Mayor Castor, and you said it right, when you look at what the days you've had to take over a complete unit of over 4,500 employees and do the things both of you have done along with your Chief of Staff and along with the fire department, with the police department, with public works with all the other departments, you had to understand that it wasn't just one department, now you have multiple departments under you with much greater responsibility. I don't see how in the world, all of you have gotten together and accomplished this in a short time because there was an additional runoff in that election, so you lost like two or three weeks that you would've gained time, you didn't have that luxury this time. So I understand that. Mr. Greco, can I ask you, do you agree with the chief's presentation?
First, I want to thank both the chiefs for level commitment to getting this unit up to full-time. We did bring it in later in the talks of this thing, and I believe that if we can get the budget passed with what we've talked about today, I know that, after speaking to Councilman Goode, we want a full-time unit there, and they both committed to working to make that happen. I don't think if we don't pass the budget and we don't get this thing moving forward, one is, I don't know that it happens October 1st unless we get it done. But a full-time unit is what's needed, it's what's necessary, it's what the numbers call for, but putting the 12-hour car in service now and hopefully keeping it in that area to run those calls in that area so that other people can get some relief is what we can, if that's what we can get accomplished today, I don't know, you know, you still have the ability to make the motion. At the end of the day, I think we're gonna, we're going to answer the calls for service in all the areas of the city, serve the citizens of Tampa with the highest ability and be able to, you know, do what we've been doing for so long.
And I'm very appreciative of that, and I could ask you one other favor?
Yes, sir.
Between the three of you. I'm from the old school, a handshake to me, just as good as something in the paper.
Well, well said, very old school, como un caballero. Good job. Yeah, like a gentleman, like a gentleman. Councilman Carlson, then Councilman Dingfelder.
I spent part of the break, a short part of it, talking to CFO, Mr. Rojero, and I had gone through the budget, so I suggested a couple ideas for cutting, and we just, because this is the last meeting, it's too late to make a quick decision on cutting something, but it sounds like, I don't want to speak for you, but it sounds like if we go through and have suggestions, they're open to listening to suggestions, so I would say that first. The second thing is, just to reiterate what they just said with Councilman Miranda, I mean, can you, can you just again emphatically say that you plan to work toward a full-time service? I mean, you're gonna give the initial service, but you're gonna work toward it, and then number two, can you say that you're going to look at the whole thing so that we can provide, make sure we provide if we can, an even greater level of service throughout the city? Is that something you think you can, yeah, whoever?
Well, like I said, I have no problem taking the administrative lead on this discussion for that matter. I had, I've been very fortunate to work with 18 fire departments over three years and a very high level of service. I've had a chance to work with the fire chief for many years, and I've really enjoyed my dialogue with the union over the past couple of weeks that I've been here. So, I have no doubt that we're gonna be committed to make sure that we have the appropriate level of service in the entire city, because I know East Tampa's in focus right now, and Councilman Goode's, you know, doing his homework and making sure that East Tampa is properly served to make sure that the citizens are getting their response time, is what we're just talking about. But it's also a citywide analysis, and I hate to revert back to old school, but, you know, we set out to reduce crime in every square inch of the city, not just the easy ones. And we did it from New Tampa to South Tampa to East Tampa to West Tampa. We're very proud of that accomplishment, and it's along those same lines that we want to deliver the same level of fire rescue service as well.
As others have said, Chief Bennett, you've only been on a short time, but so far, every commitment you've made has been true, Mr. Rojero, the same thing with me, and so I trust that they're going to do that, and I think we need to work collaboratively with them. I'm very committed to the East Tampa community, even though it's not my district and I'm not citywide. If my colleague, Mr. Goode's, in addition to the budget tonight, would like to propose a motion to specifically ask them to do what we just asked them, so that we put it, so we all vote on it, I'm happy to second it and vote for it, or I can make a motion. My fear is that if we hold up the whole budget at this point, that we could throw a wrench in everything, and you know that, you know...
No, I'm not, no, my suggestion is not to make the motion, obviously you have the right to make, would you do the budget proper stuff first and then make the motion at the end?
Yeah, afterwards.
That's all I was gonna say.
Thank you. And, but if they don't do what they say they're gonna do, then we can negotiate as we go along the way. I think we've committed, you know, without any preparation, a couple of weeks ago, we all said, yes, we want to put a million dollars extra in East Tampa, even though we didn't get any of our projects done, and we'll do, we're gonna do that again on the CRA, and we're gonna do that on other things. And so I want the East Tampa community to know that you've got, I think, seven votes up here and the mayor's office dedicated to it. This whole group inherited some of this budget, and we inherited whatever the spending practices were in the past, and now we've gotta change everything going forward and stick to our commitment we're making to the community.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Dingfelder, then Councilman Citro, I believe, and Councilman Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, one, I don't want to ignore the citizens and employees of the Tampa Bay Community Network, TBCN, Speak Up Tampa Bay. I don't know if I was aware that they had been completely cut out of the city budget at the same time that TBAE did, was, but the good news is, the county is still funding them to a certain extent. I would urge TBCN to work with our administration, as well as council, to try and justify over the next year to perhaps get back in the budget, because I do believe that, like TBAE, they offer a good service to the community in regard to training and business development and that sort of thing, next year. In regard to the level of service, Mr. Bennett and Chief Cicero spoke to, I just want to reiterate, and I agree with you completely, chief, I mean, we can't look at this, this is not just an East Tampa issue. Obviously, if our level of response has dropped from maybe what it was 10, 15 years ago at five minutes, and now we're at eight minutes, somebody mentioned about that that takes an investment, just like everything else. To keep a proper and appropriate level of service takes a level of investment, a level of commitment from this council as well as from the administration. It's not an overnight thing, but maybe over the next four years, you know, maybe we try and improve 30 seconds or a minute each year and set our goals, set our goals high, so we can, well, I guess, set our goals low, so we can get back down to the five-minute response time that Chief Bodo had referred to. That's not tonight, but that's down the road, and let's work together on that. Mr. Goode, I'm thrilled to have been and continue to support your efforts. I don't know where you're gonna go on this, and that's your call. I think that you've done a yeoman's job for your district and for our community as a whole, because everything you do for your district helps the entire city. It's not, you know, I don't want anybody to say that our land of Goode's just worried about his district, because he's not. You know, you're here with us week in and week out voting on citywide things, things that are important to the whole city. You and I used to work together, you know, at a totally different part of the city. You do care about the whole city, and you care passionately about the district as well, and you've done a great job in a short period of time, and I commend you for that. Thank you.
Councilman Goode, did you want to go, sir?
You know, there's a saying, a closed mouth doesn't get fed, it's open. And that's true for my district, and for the city as a whole. If my mouth had stayed closed, some of the things we have passed, wouldn't have got fed. That's why I always say we're hungry. We're hungry. Things that never happened before. Someone has to put it on the table. Someone has to do it. Now, me putting about the rescue car, it opened up a whole nother box, about the whole city as a whole. You know, I work the city, so people can't come and just tell me anything sometimes because I know better. I know better. I know what can be done, what can't be done, I know how the politics are played, it's like a football game. I'm gonna call it tied tonight. I'm gonna call it tied, with the commitment that if we don't do what we say we're gonna do, I'm gonna ask for a rematch. I'm gonna ask for a rematch, and bring it up again and again and again. And any issue that's important to citizens of Tampa or important to my district, I'm gonna fight every time, whether it passes or not, it's gonna come back to the table until we can resolve an issue, a compromise, that people understand it's not about the administration, it's not about the council, it's about the taxpayers getting their due just, no matter where they live, and especially the east side of town. I'm gonna raise hell every time if I feel there's an injustice. That's what 27 precincts in my district told me to do. I don't care what the minor number was, but 27, you know how that goes, Mr. Goode. You know how it goes. So if I don't get the issues on the table that they told me they wanted to hear, then what good am I? I have to bring the issues forward. I'm never gonna have my community fighting against one another. That ain't gonna happen again. And I know the people who kind of mustered up that mess with our CAC board and our Fair Oaks group, but they were here tonight. President, they showed up. And I won't have anybody, anybody come to try to destroy my neighborhood with my people infighting. I am the leader of District 5. I am the leader of District 5. That's who, the voters empowered me to carry the torch. I employ help from any council member to help me carry that torch. But I won't let anybody infiltrate to have infighting with the folks in District 5. I know what they told me to do, I'm at every community meeting, every event in East Tampa I'm at, or in the city. People say, man, it's a full-time job for you. Yeah, it is. Because I'm every place, all the time. So nobody can come up in this podium and tell me something that ain't true, because I've been there. If I have somebody that I know has been, is gonna give me the place so I can make that call or be at the next meeting so I can figure out what the facts were. Because I was at the Fair Oaks meeting Monday night. I was there. So, what I would say, gentlemen, I hope, you know, Mr. Miranda, he's the old school, I'm an old school guy, a handshake, but I know how government works sometimes. Handshakes can say one thing, but it can get turned. So at the end, once we possibly get past this budget process, that maybe we come up with something else in place to make sure that the trust is there and the commitments are honored. And that's all I ask. John's been on the job for 22 days, I can't say, he's done a hell of a lot of stuff in 23 days. I gotta give him an props. He's worked his ass off, he's answered every time I've called him and told him about, even the Soto Park, we talk about parks? I got a whole list about the Soto Park, but John went over there and had a meeting. So, I thank you for that. That's in District 5, too. Nobody knows about Palmetto Beach, they're a forgotten place, too. But they're in 5. But they're in 5. So, I'm gonna fight for those places that people don't know. Silver Springs has been calling, too. I got issues there. So, gentlemen, it ain't just, you know, the east. I tell people, I have the most diverse district with all kinds of people. Most of them are poor. So you're gonna hear me yell and scream, it is never personal, so I won't stay up there and say, it's never personal. It's about business and getting the job done for the people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, thank you very, very much. What we have done here, and when I say "we," thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you to our Chief Financial Officer, thank you, Chief Cicero, Chief Rojero, thank you, thank you to the fire union, thank you to the community who has come out and spoke. What we have learned here tonight is dialogue can solve everything, and I'm glad to see the cohesiveness between the administration and between the council. This is something that's gonna keep Tampa growing, make Tampa better. Let's keep this going, let's work together, let's make this even better in the next coming years. Thank you.
Councilman Goode.
Just to respond to Councilman Goode's, you know, I have to give you props, you've been an excellent representative, you know, we've been here for a few months together, but you have a lot of courage, and you stand up for the community, which is a community that has been ignored. I've said it before, but it's true, East Tampa is very diverse, but people forget about it. You mentioned Palmetto Beach, you know, it's a forgotten area, and so many other neighborhoods. But, you know, I respect the fact that you fight and you do what you were elected to do, and that is, you know, you speak, you listen, and as you say, you are hungry, and rightfully so, because, you know, East Tampa's the land that time forgot, and I think we're gonna see a lot of changes, hopefully in the next few years, and I look forward to supporting you, I can't promise every single time, but, and bringing what is due to your community. So I appreciate your efforts very much, thank you.
Thank you. And just on my own end, I think for Councilman Goode, you know, something that, you know, we talked about Chief Bennett's background in law enforcement, obviously Mayor Castor's background in law enforcement, but Councilman Goode, you know, served for about three decades in Tampa Police Department, so whenever it comes to public safety, this is something that this man feels in his heart, so that's obviously a fight that's very close to him, obviously. I think, you know, whenever we look at the issues involving East Tampa and why this council stuck their neck out for that extra million dollars, it wasn't just as a favor to a nice guy. Councilman Goode, though, certainly is a nice guy, and we're all friends with him, and he's a vigorous fighter for his district. It's also because of the acute historical issues that we all know about East Tampa. East Tampa is where it's at, not because of happenstance, it's because of intentional steps that have been taken over the last 50, 100 years, and we know what those steps entail. And it's our duty presently to not just know those steps, but to take steps that we can take on our own end to remedy those injustices by giving that area of Tampa respect. So for me, issues like that are obviously a no-brainer 110%. I'd like to, and obviously I'm not making a motion in this regard, but at the very least have the parties come back in 100 days, because this is an issue, I don't think there's any dispute that this area would benefit from the full-time service as opposed to peak hour service. I don't think there's any dispute about that. The dispute is, where are we gonna get the money from? I want to, and I would suggest the parties come back in 100 days, and to report not only on East Tampa, but we were also, there was a mention of Station 13. I mean, ever since I've been in, we always hear about the problems at Station 13... always hear about the problems at Station 13 with the Terrace Park, Bush Boulevard, North Tampa community, you know, and, and a lot of the different areas in the city that obviously need that help. You know, I, when I take a look at this budget, and not just dealing with public safety, but as a whole, I see it as a hopeful preface for what we're going to see in the next eight years. We all went out there and talked about what we're going to do for neighborhoods, for all the neighborhoods of the city of Tampa. And I hope that when we take a look at the future budgets, that we're going to see real, robust investments in all of our neighborhoods. In the last couple of years, we paid a lot of attention to downtown. It's important for every 21st century city to have a viable residential downtown. But beginning in 2017, we began to shift away from that and to talk about our neighborhoods, all of our neighborhoods. That was the year that we talked about, and we passed improvements with Williams Park, Villa Brothers Park, New Tampa Recreation Center, et cetera. You know, something that I, I, and I brought pictures, and again, to talk about, and it, it's funny, this, this council tonight is in many ways a, a positive dialogue about Chief Bennett. You know, we had private discussions on great concerns that I had in a couple of areas of my district that have been very ignored. And we're talking about Copeland Park, about, and I'm going to show a picture here on something that this budget begins to remedy. Copeland Park, Councilman Goode knows that. You have some properties here. This, if y'all don't mind, if, you know what, if you don't mind. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Shelby. That right there, there is a boardwalk that is in Copeland Park that has been in grossest repair for some time. And Mr. Shelby's going to put up a picture. That is what was up for the community to see whenever the good working people of Copeland Park went to that area on that boardwalk. Can you imagine seeing that in your neighborhood? What kind of a message does that send about what the city of Tampa thinks about Copeland Park? Now, Marty, if you could put the next one up. I feel like I'm in trial here. That, that is how it is right now. That, that's certainly an improvement from keep out with, with spray paint. Now, if Marty, if you could take the next one up there. These are pictures that I took myself, I guess it was the Sunday before we did the first reading on the budget, sent them over to Mr. Bennett. And if you could put a couple more pictures there, Marty, I appreciate it. And again, that's what that community has to see. What kind of a message does that send? This budget begins to make improvements to get the dredging process, because, and that's, and I'll get on that one next, to take care of that, that boardwalk over at Copeland Park. And additionally, this budget includes $25,000 for beautification of Copeland Park. That's something that I sought after the fact, as well as repair of that bridge. That is Tacoma Park for the good people out there at Terrace Park and Bush Boulevard. Look at that park, how much disrepair it is. This budget includes, from my meetings with Mr. Bennett and the mayor, $25,000 for beautification of that park. I spoke to the Terrace Park Neighborhood Association last night, told the folks about it, and we're going to have a, a neighborhood park enhancement party out there. So we're looking forward to that. So I hope that future budgets take this as a down payment on parks, on family life in this city, and on public safety in the city. You know, that, that's why I ran for office, is to invest in our neighborhoods and the issues that I care about. The presentation, and thank you, Marty, for that, the presentation that was done a week ago, when it comes to enhancements and accessibility in all of our city parks for children and families with special needs, thank you very much, you know, that's about $2 million. In the next seven years, we can make that go down 110% by dedicating to $300,000 a year. We can do that. We can do that. If you have a kid with special needs, that means a lot to you. And if you don't have a kid with special needs, that should mean a lot to you because of common empathy and human decency. So I see this budget as a down payment on that to begin to make it the right way. It is in some ways a no thrills and no frills budget, but in the last couple of weeks, we've put a couple of frills in there. And I use that term inappropriately. These aren't frills, these are basic needs. These are basic needs. So we're getting there, and I think that's a positive thing. Anything else from council members before we take motions, et cetera? Okay. Okay, next, we're going to do the reading of the millage rate resolution, and I would ask for that to be done by our finance chair, Councilman Miranda. Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, I think we're going to skip that step. We closed the public comment portion, but we'll move on to the, the technical parts now.
Okay, so we don't do that?
No, we're, no, we're not going to close the public comment.
You're closing the public comment on the operating and capital budget.
But we don't have to do that by motion. We just announced that. Is that correct?
Well, I think, take a motion.
Just to close, just to close the public.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And thank you, gentlemen. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, a resolution levying an ad valorem tax rate of 6 and 2,076, 10,000, or 6.2076 mils upon all real and personable taxable property in the city of Tampa for the fiscal year 2020, authorizing the mayor, the city clerk, and to certify such millage, providing an effective date, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Tampa, Florida. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by...
Entire thing.
Yeah, I'm going to read the whole thing. I just put a brief there.
You got the second?
Okay. All right, then. An ad valorem, believe me, it's long.
Section one, then.
That an ad valorem tax rate of 6 and 2,076, 10,000, or 6.2076 mils, to raise the amount of money as fixed in the recommended operating and capital budget of the city of Tampa, Florida, for the fiscal years commencing October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, for the general fund for the maintenance and operation of the city of Tampa, Florida, is hereby levied as provided by law on all real and personal property taxable for, for that purpose in the city of Tampa, Florida. That the mayor and the city clerk, as the proper authorities of the city of Tampa, are duly authorized and empowered to directly to certify that the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, Florida, the millage should be levied for all purposes for the fiscal year of 2020 in the city of Tampa, Florida, to wit 6.2076 mils, which exceeds a rollback rate of 5.8181 mils, as defined in section 200.265, 1 of the statutes of the state of Florida, by 6.69%. And that requests the levy of millage as set forth upon all real and personal property in the city of Tampa, Florida, as above set forth, in accordance with the provisions of the Constitution and laws of the state of Florida. That all proper officers of the city of Tampa, Florida, are authorized to do all things necessary and proper in order to carry out and make efficient the terms and conditions of this resolution, which shall become effective and immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you very much.
There are motion made to, is that my correct motion that's going to be made to adopt the millage rate?
Yes.
That was it, correct? Making sure. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, if our finance chair, Councilman Charlie Miranda, could read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I move in ordinance adopting the budget of the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, as presented by the mayor, providing for the levy as provided by law of a tax and all taxable property in the city of Tampa, and fixing the millage within said city, making appropriations in accordance with the provisions of said budget, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk, as the proper authorities of the city of Tampa, to certify to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, Florida, the millage has been levied for all purposes for the fiscal year 2020 in the city of Tampa, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Or do we need to take roll call? I apologize.
No, I, yeah.
Go ahead.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's? Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Chairman, I make a motion also to adopt the capital improvement and budget resolution.
Sir.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now, before we do a motion to close, I want to take, if I may, motions as they apply to future reporting as to tonight's budget. I know, Councilman Goode, did you wish to make any, sir?
I guess you got to let us into it. Like staff to come back with, make a motion with staff to come back with 100 days as it relates to the fire department service.
More specifically, the full-time...
I'm getting into that. Reverses to citywide service and also the full-time unit in, in East Tampa, Station 16.
Second.
Thank you. And may I have a friendly amendment to that, if I may, to also include Station 13 in that?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, sir. And thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do you wish to, do you wish to put a date, 100 dates?
100 days.
Yeah, we've got, that would be October, November, December, probably the first, probably the first meeting of the year. Is that, is that okay, sir? Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Okay, any other motions as it relates to the budget? We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, tonight's hearing is adjourned. Oh, and I apologize. Information ...
Yeah, new business.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it's very sad. I'm sure everybody's aware.
If everybody doesn't mind, we've got about maybe three more minutes. Thank you.
Very sad. I'm sure everybody's aware that this past weekend, we lost one of our great civic activists and a wonderful friend, Vicky Pallier. And our deepest regrets go out to her husband, Archie, and any family members. I won't go into great detail about Vicky. She spoke for herself. She a great champion for her, her neighborhood, Bay Shore Gardens, for all neighborhoods. And she was up in front of this podium and speaking to us individually for the last 15, 20 years. We're all going to miss her deeply. With that said, my motion is to, and I think Mr. Citro actually already did a commendation for her, but my motion is actually to go a little bit further. I talked to her husband, and she had a great affinity for Fred Ball Park, which is down there on Bay Shore. It's tiny little pocket park, but specifically, there's a gazebo there. And I'd like, what I'd like to do is, is request that the administration, and I'm sure the administration knew, knew Vicky, and, and that Mayor Castor knew Vicky, that we can work together to, to, to name that gazebo. It doesn't have a name right now.
Second.
But name that gazebo after Ms. Pallier, and perhaps put up an appropriate sign or plaque.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Citro.
Council members, I did speak with the mayor today at the West Tampa Chamber of Commerce meeting, and Mayor Castor is, is fully in support of this. So I, I, thank you, John. Great idea.
Thank you, sir. We have a very thoughtful motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by, a very thoughtful second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode's anything, sir? Councilman Maniscalco? Councilman Citro?
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda?
One, sir, I would like to make a motion to present a commendation to Coach Bobby Diaz, who recently retired as a coach of Chamberlain High School.
Second.
And he has been the coach here for nearly 30 years. I would like to make this presentation commendation on Thursday, October 17, 2019.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman. Okay, I have nothing. Receive and file.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council is adjourned. Thank you. And everyone out there, thank you very much for your patience. Thank you.